Hello, and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the second half of the testimony given by Tony Nissen, former Ocean Gate Director of Engineering. In the previous video, we heard Mr. Nissen speak about his time at Ocean Gate, from when he was hired to when he was ultimately fired. We also learned about his experiences with building and testing Titan, and some of the problems he encountered. This video will also get into more of a technical side, such as the viewport, classification, non-destructive testing, and further testing in general, or as far as dives are concerned, a lack thereof. Stockton Rush, just like in the previous video, plays a vital role in much of this, according to Mr. Nissen's testimony. Now, let's get into the video, and I'll be back at the end for a few final words.
Mr. Nissen, can you identify the document before you...
Yeah, it's a plot of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 instruments that I had installed. And in the center of the case, one of them in particular, if you have a nice rise, and the sister instrument is right next to it, should have pretty much the same rise, but you get a step function, like what we see here. And I told Stockton, I was like, "Something's going on in there." Told him the hole was flexing too much. Like, everything that I could do to tell him, like, "Here are the alarms. This is why we shouldn't go." We're there. And when he sat, when we sat down to a meeting, I think Bob Schuman was there, he wanted me to buy off on the idea of going to the Titanic, and I told him, "No. You can't. It's not clean." And I told him this exact phrase. I said, "The submersible, what we're doing, has never been done before, right? We don't have classing direction on what good looks like." I said, "Nobody knows what good looks like, or what it's supposed to look like. But what I do know is it shouldn't look like that."
And Serge, to clarify, was that conversation before or after the crack was discovered in the hole?
It's before. I told him before he couldn't go. It's the reason for another dive, more dives.
Mr. Nissen, earlier you stated that you were hired. When you were hired, you were told that the Titan Hole was almost completed, and the engineering was already completed. Was that actually true?
No.
Can you expand?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to sound like too much of an alarmist, but there isn't much of my interview that was true. Nothing. And I had already quit my job. What do you do after that? Right? No, it wasn't ready to go. When I did the FEAs on it, it wouldn't survive. Not at all. Like, Brian's Design and Analysis Report showed really good margins. I mean, really good margins. I work in a relationship with Dave Dyer at APL. Like, I couldn't get a good FEA out of him. Brian Spencer wouldn't provide me with anything more than what he did to grade 5 titanium in the Dyer that he produced. But that's why I hired my own analyst to go do this, because I didn't have anything that gave me the... It wasn't ready.
You stated that conformance with regulations or standards does not prevent all casualties or accidents. However, is it your opinion that conformance with regulations and standards does not reduce the amount of casualties or accidents from happening?
It significantly reduces them. Sure. Yeah, I mean, we need these. We need a... I couldn't imagine a world without them, to tell you the truth. What would that look like, the Wild West? Significantly reduces them.
Lieutenant Steele, could you please bring up Exhibit 037, Page 20? This is the Boeing feasibility study of Ocean Gate's deep-sea submersible hole. We noted from this report that the hole was recommended to be 10 inches, and then optimized to 7 inches thick. However, as we know, the final design was 5 inches thick. Are you aware of how Ocean Gate got to the 5-inch thickness?
That was Brian Spencer and Stockton. It was 5 inches thick before I joined the organization, and you couldn't move it. And that was a hot topic of discussion with Dave Dyer and Ocean Gate. And that was, that and the knuckle design were two large points of contention for a long time.
Do you know if any other independent studies outside of Spencer Composites were conducted in making this decision?
On the 5 inches?
Yes.
No, it's a good question. No, that was determined before I joined the organization.
You discussed concerns about voids in the carbon fiber. If you conducted material tests much like you mentioned the witness panels, could this detect a potential void in the carbon fiber?
What do you mean, could what?
Could the material tests, could that detect a potential void in the carbon fiber?
Sure. Yeah, so that's why we do witness panels for critical systems, 100%. Cut it in two, and take a look at it. We have microscopes that could do this really, really well. Thin slice it and do some acoustic measurements on it. That's great, if you can get it thinner.
And I know you mentioned this earlier, but I just want to confirm that non-destructive testing was discussed for the carbon fiber, however, none was conducted.
Sorry. No, the... So, we had inspectors come out and look at it. And let's consider that non-destructive testing. So they brought their instruments out, and they couldn't punch through it. Punch through it is a term for... Couldn't get through it. And so, we contracted one person, if you wouldn't mind me reading a couple of things. Is that okay?
Yes. This is something that we have not seen previously, correct?
No.
Any objection from Ocean Gate on this? This would be our NDT evaluation, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, an inspection that we had. We had an inspector come out, and my conversation with them, I jotted down some notes.
I think this would be relevant to why the hole could not be sufficiently NDT-tested. Do you have any objections to discussing this report, Ocean Gate?
Could we take a 5-minute break for us to take a look?
Yes, certainly. The hearing will recess for 5 minutes and reconvene at 11:53.
I do want to say, when we talk about whether or not we didn't do any non-destructive testing. Maybe not testing, and so, like, my brain quickly goes to something a bit more specific. But evaluation, we did. For all of Stockton's faults, and he was a difficult person to work with, he did want to get this thing tested, bright, inspected. And I do believe, when he told me during my interview, that it was in his plan to go do that. I'm not sure that... I think he believed it. So, we did ask people to come take a look at it. People who were more, had more expertise at this than we did. And one of them is this conversation I had with a Level 3 inspector from Mistras. And he was able to, just by looking at it, he knew the layout pattern. He had a comment in here that it looks like there's no compaction, which I'm not surprised, because it was the end of the hole. And so, something to note is, when you filament wind a case like this, it winds on a mandrel, and so your carbon fiber comes off of a spool, like a sewing machine, and it mixes in some glue, and then it starts going around this big mandrel, and then it goes all the way to the end, and then it's got to come back. Well, those ends get that double layer, and so you make your mandrel a little bit longer so that you can cut those off, and it's the cutoff ends that he was looking at. And so, it's expected to see voids, but we wanted him to see, like, is there anything you can see in the part that's closest to what we're going to use? And he found it difficult to do that, is all. His measurement instruments really went to 4 inches. We knew it was a shot in the dark, for sure.
Was there any plan to have the hole reevaluated throughout the lifetime of the hole?
So... Yes. The only way that I could figure that I would be able to do that is, at some point, we would have to make a device that holds 2 instruments across from each other, like a tuning fork. And now, we'd have to stand the hole on end and move it around the whole hole to be able to inspect that. And we discussed this with Boeing before, we discussed it before we assembled the whole vehicle. It was an option, but that tool doesn't exist yet, and, you know, that's inexpensive and delay to do that. So, we did have discussions to go do that. I would call it that it constituted a plan. It's in my brain, that it's on the list of Tony things to go do. Yeah, so, in that kind of inspection. Really, that's the only way you can do this, I believe.
Was there any plans to have the hole replaced after a certain number of cycles to depth?
Hole replacement? So, okay, so that's a great question. And so, when I say Serial Number 1 was successful, we've got to understand what the requirements were a bit. There wasn't a fatigue or cycle requirement. Stockton didn't. He didn't have one, he didn't want one. He truly believed, he only wanted one acoustic instrument. He truly believed that one acoustic instrument was going to be able to tell him that the hole's compromised and it's done. And really, we needed the string gauges on there also. And so, there was no lifetime, we didn't have an end of life on that. He didn't want one, and it's not something that I... I'm not sure anybody could write that on a piece of paper. There's no cert backbone to go do that.
And what was the plan for when the hole should be retired?
If Stockton had a plan, I didn't know it.
Recorder, could you please bring up Exhibit 019, Page 8? I want to call your attention to the parameter "Cycle Life", which is located about halfway down the page.
Okay.
The optimum cycle life was 10,000 cycles to maximum rated depth, and the limit was 1,000 cycles to maximum rated depth of 6,000 meters.
All right.
Do you believe the Titan Hole 1, before testing began, would have been able to withstand 1,000 cycles to depth?
No. Well, let me answer, so, there's a little... We started to question whether or not Brian was building a hole that was going to meet this requirement. And so, what Stockton decided, and part of me turning over Serial 1 to the operations group, is we knew that we were going to have to go get another hole made by somebody, not Brian. And Stockton wanted to sever that relationship. We had questions. A lot of it had to do with, we missed the 2.21 safety factor on the inward radial deflection at the inside of the case. We missed it by, my report says, a lot. And so, it put everything into question. So I'm answering that from the perspective that we had decided that we wouldn't go to... This almost started to not matter anymore, and we wondered, well, is it really going to do that? So monitoring became extremely important, except... That got terminated, of course, in 2018, 2019, when the data just wasn't clean enough. So, to answer, it's a very long period of time to start to separate ourselves from whether or not this was going to be achievable.
As you're aware, the Titan Hole 1 did not complete even 3 cycles to a shallower depth than 6,000 meters without having a crack in it. Where do you believe the gaps between the analysis and the real-time testing occurred?
Got struck by lightning. That one, that one's big. Like, even if there's a, sorry, even if there's a D-LAM in it someplace, you would have thought that it would do better performance than that when you have a safety factor, like you just mentioned. It's, that margin is huge. To miss it by that much, really, that's a significant blow to the structure somehow. There's very few things that can do that. Lightning is one of them.
And do you believe it would have been able to make 1,000 cycles if it was not struck by lightning?
We don't have data to show that. I can't even answer that, yes or no. Like, if I had good, deep data prior to the lightning event, I could answer that with better confidence, but nobody could know.
As the Director of Engineering, were you responsible for procuring the acrylic window for the submersible?
Sure. Like, when you say, like, "Design it," like, when you say...
Specifically, were you involved in the discussions with Hydrospace regarding the shape and its certified rating?
Oh, yeah. Will and I talked a lot about the P-Port, you know? And I even did a, I have that one for you guys, too. I even did a, if I remember right, this guy worked for Will. We did a great presentation, a collaboration, on the performance of the viewport, because it was a non-standard viewport, right?
Can you please explain those discussions and the outcome of those discussions?
I can. So Stockton wanted a viewport that was unobstructed, and he wanted a person's whole head to be able to look through it. Viewport guidance is, it's not solid at best. So Thomas Tudell and I wrote a presentation talking about hybrid windows, because the data, the guidance, the science on it is really pretty thin. And that they're, we know that they last really well. Not a lot of people do them. Viewports are typically done spherical, but with uniform thickness, they're typically done flat. When you flatten the inside, make the outside spherical, it starts to distort things a little bit, but you get some good mechanical properties out of them. We did some FEA analysis on it. We gave a prediction for Serial Number 1. I have a picture in here of the test setup that we did to measure its displacement, which was important. And we were going to report, I can't remember what society we were going to go report this to. God, we really wish I could remember that. But the performance of the viewport actually was about on mark for what we did. And so, we generated a white paper to give it to the community to say, "Look, look what we did," and it worked.
I'm sure you're aware that Hydrospace gave it a reduced depth rating, which was not to the depth of the Titanic. Did you have any concerns about that reduced depth rating?
Yeah. I was talking to Will on the phone when we did this, and Will, Conan, I think he's going to be on with you guys, too, right? Will wanted us to go make a testing program for it. And I said, "Great, let's convince Stockton to go do that." And so, I didn't want to do it. It's going to take, it was going to take some time. It was going to take some money to go do that. Will said, "Well, I won't certify it." And now, when I'm telling you this, I'm, of course, the go-between. Stockton said, "I don't care." And he said, "Make me the window." And so, I took out the STACHO papers, which there's a lot of good data in that. I think folks who comment on acrylic viewports for Subsea really do need to read the STACHO papers. And you become a lot more of an expert, not just a little bit more, but a lot more. So we took the STACHO papers, and we developed some dimensions and a prediction. And Will said, "I'll make it for you, but I'm only going to assert it to," I think it was 1,300 meters, right? 1,300 or 1,800? I think it was 1,300 meters. Stockton said, "Fine."
And did this cause you any concern?
It did, which is why we instrumented it to measure its performance. Neat thing about acrylic viewports is, they do a very good job of telling you when they're failing. And so, you get a crazing in cracks form. They're... They're very good predictors of that, but you have to inspect them. You have to take them out, you've got to clean them, you've got to have a good inspection, resurface them every so often, and that sealing interface, it needs to be straight on. What's most important for those viewports is, when you go that deep and you're cold, they start to cold flow, and so they get really, really soft. And this was a sliding interface. And so, some viewports are put together in a clamping kind of scenario. And this one was actually designed and intended to move. And what was most important is that it did not move. The inside surface of the viewport did not move past the inside lip of the sliding interface. If that happens, and cold flow is a result, the edges come around and kind of flow, they get soft, and when you try to come back up, that viewport is now constrained, and you could have a failure. You'll get a crack, more than likely for sure. But the concern, but I told Stockton, like, we need to test that viewport. So, the first, the first deep... We had no data on that, so the first deep test we did, when I hung it on a fishing line, we instrumented it, I'm pretty sure we did that one, to measure its displacement. That was really, really important. And the displacement came back dead nuts on for everything that we were looking at, and inspections turned out to be nothing. So, I think with time and Stockton diving in it, gained more confidence that the viewport was going to be okay.
As we understand it, the titanium dome was originally designed to be grade 5. However, with the final design, it was grade 3. Is there any significance to this?
Reduced margins.
Were you involved in the decision to move from grade 5 to grade 3?
It was all Stockton.
Do you know why he made that decision?
Oh, grade 5 would have taken, it was twice as expensive, and it would have taken, I think, 6 more months to get it. Because we had to get it overseas, if I remember right. It was really hard to get grade 5.
This next question is in relation to the lifting eyes and the stress at the clevis. The clevis was the titanium U-shaped groove attached to the titanium segments or rings that house the carbon fiber. Can you discuss the center of gravity of the Titan and the asymmetric loading on the rings?
All right, so there's a few items that I told the team you can absolutely not do. And welding lifting eyes on ring, on the rings, was one of them. That was first proposed by Scott Griffith and Stockton. And one, I told him, "No, you can't do it because of the loads." Two, "We're already glued to the carbon fiber." The CG, center of gravity, of Serial Number 1 was not the center of the case itself, the carbon fiber structure or with the domes. The center gravity of the entire vehicle, when assembled, was actually aft a bit. And it was enough where the vehicle, if hung by lifting eyes, would sit canter a bit, so you'd get a little bit of a lift on it. The reason why I told him he can't have the lifting eyes welded to Ring 1 was the clevis, the dimensions of the clevis being the C part, for maybe those who don't know. It's a clevis and tang design. And I'm assuming Serial Number 2 went with this, but Serial Number 1, the tang being the carbon fiber on the inside. That dimension of the top there, it's a small dimension. The domes, the rings and the domes were never designed to take excessive load in a shear direction. And so, that would be a sliding interface, or if I give it fixity, looking like this, shear would be something pushing down on it. And so, if you could think of the weight of the hole on the clevis, shear would be pushing on this little lip here. And that's, it's a small dimension. The point of those was just to keep it glued in place, because Subsea structures, a beautiful thing about them is it's uniform loading all the way around. It's not statically loading like your automobile or your house, where everything's just pointed down. So, the rings, when you lift it and it canners like this, that's now a peeling at the top of the forward, right at the lip, and it is a peeling on the aft part of that lip on the back. Now, there's, there is rigidity in the system, but if you took it at the... So at the macro scale, it doesn't look like it moves at all. But really, we're worried about the micro scale. Like, a little bit of movement, is it enough to peel that glued interface away from the carbon fiber part? We don't know that, so I told him, "You can't have it." Serial Number 1 was designed to lift every other place but the domes or the rings. It was not designed to do that. And in fact, in order to give it uniform loading all the way around the rings, the landing gear was designed to give it fixity in 3 places. If you could think of 90 degrees, 180 degrees, and 270. So with 3 places in fixity in space, then that maintains curvature across the top. I wouldn't buy into the idea of changing that whatsoever. Then, the problem with that is water intrusion, really, more than anything. Because the ring's not going to fall off. I guess the dome fell off. I was surprised to hear that. That's... I'm sorry, that just escaped me. But it's water intrusion, really would be the problem.
For the first hole, did any of the carbon fiber need to be trimmed to fit in the clevis?
So Brian gave instructions. The design of the clevis for the tang was a collaborative effort with Brian. And what I wasn't going to do was, let me back up and just say, all these critical interfaces were collaborative events, really with the experts who kind of know, really know that better than most. And Brian's expertise really is more prepping these interfaces for gluing inside. And so, when I gave him the drawings on what that looks like, he gave the direction on what that trim would look like to be able to fit that on there. And it was more of a cleaning preparatory in terms of do that. If you're asking whether or not we had to change the dimensions on that, I'm not recalling that we had to do anything to go meet that dimension in there. I was actually pretty surprised, if I remember right.
These next questions are related to the real-time monitoring system, which was also referred to as the Acoustic Emission System. As the Director of Engineering, were you responsible for the real-time monitoring system?
Right, okay. So, I gave the direction on how many instruments we would put, where they would go. Mike Fralotti, who was a board member, designed the Acoustic Emission Sensing Hardware, so the data acquisition, what we connected the wires to. And then that software that he wrote writes the data to a file. What else?
The thresholds.
The thresholds, Stockton. The interpretation is, the interpretation turned into my interpretation when Ocean Gate wanted to go to the Titanic in 2019. And when I write reports like I have, then I get the data, I say, "Look..." And when I write reports like, like I have, then I get the data, I say, look, that interpretation is mine.
Can you describe the purpose of the real-time monitoring system?
So if you're a group of people going to go down the path of designing something, and it's something like, like this or, or an airplane, where really you should pick a cert path to go, to go down, like, how are you going to know you're, you're going to be okay? Really, anybody could go to, you know, anybody could go design this thing out of plastic if they wanted to. I think we all agree that it wouldn't be such a good idea. But let's assume that we're serious about it, and we want to make sure that, that it's solid engineering. You're going to have to pick a path for validation, which is really what certification is about. To an extent, certification is about verification as well, but, but verification really is about designing or verifying or knowing engineering intent, so by design. And then it's also, and really, validation is, is more like, do you meet the requirements? And so the, the requirements are, you know, we want to go this deep, and we want to be able to know we have this confidence level and whatnot. So in picking that path, you could go a clean certification path that says, well, what agency out there has a path for us to go follow? And if that doesn't exist, then you've got to figure out a way, well, how do we make sure that we're going to be clean? And acoustic emissions is, is a great way to see when brittle structures, glass, carbon fiber, have a failure in it. And it doesn't matter if it's just a, a snap of one, or just like something crackles once, or if you have imminent failure. That, that determination is a little bit different. But these acoustic sensors have, have great ability to, to be able to detect this. There's a standard for acoustic emissions that we took a look at, and it's a 0.5 millimeter lead test. And, and it goes something like this, you put your acoustic sensor on a, on a structure and you take 0.5 millimeter lead and you just snap it someplace else, like you would break a pencil. And the acoustic sensor should pick it up. It's, it's amazing to see the nine-in acoustic instruments that I put in there. I, I snapped 0.5 millimeters lead on the, on the, on the hull. And I could give you, I can give you time differentials on when that acoustic wave went propagated down the, the hull. It's, it's, it's neat, it's fantastic. So without a clean certification path, you've got to pick a technology that is going to be able to give you warning. The idea is that you're going to be able to interpret that warning in enough time. And do you have the instruments to go do that?
As a summation, this was a letter of affirmation from Mr. Alan Green regarding utilizing acoustic emissions to help with averting an impending failure on the Titan submersible.
Sorry, I'm missing seven, five. Are you talking about Alan Green on June 5th, 2018?
Yes.
I have, I have my copy of it.
Can you please describe who Mr. Alan Green was and his relationship with Ocean Gate and the acoustic emissions system for Titan?
All right, so recognizing that, we, we are, that there's other people out there with much more expertise and specialists, right? Alan Green is one of those in the acoustic emissions field. He's been not just doing it forever, but in talking with him, what he's been able to accomplish with it. We hired him to take a look at what we were doing and give us an assessment, like, are we crazy? Like, is this, are we going okay? And, and this was the letter that he wrote to us after his visit. And as far as I know, I, I don't know that he was used afterwards.
We have reason to believe that there were communications between Mr. Green and Ocean Gate following Stockton Rush's assertions that the RTM system could detect the sound of micro buckling in the sub's hull way before it fails. Are you aware of any such communications?
I don't, specifically with, with Alan, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think Alan would, I guess it's my opinion, I don't know that he would buy into the micro buckling.
Are you?
I'm, I'm not sure. I would buy into micro buckling, but maybe I'd, maybe I'd eat my words.
Ocean Gate?
Mr. Newberry, is there an exhibit that Lieutenant Commander Williams is referring to? There, there was a statement about communications. I don't believe that's in the record.
Yeah, Lieutenant Commander Williams, do you know where that assertion originated from?
This is actually from a Wired correspondence or a, a, something we saw online from Wired. We just are asking if he's aware of any communications.
Okay, so we, we don't really have a evidence to support that, but, and it's my understanding, Mr. Nissen, that you, that you're not aware of any communications along those lines?
If, if he made communication without me there, I certainly wouldn't know. But my, but my understanding with Alan Green really, really goes as far as this document here, as, as far as I remember. Stockton would have talks with people without me, so I'm sometimes cupping my pants down a little bit.
And Mr. Newberry, by my may, it's fine, we have no objection to the question, it's just if it could be phrased as a question, if it's not actually a piece of evidence.
Yes, agree. So can you rephrase that question that was originally asked?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nissen, are you aware of any communications between Mr. Alan and Mr. Stockton Rush after the RTM system was originally installed that had any, that there were any concerns of this RTM system?
I don't, I don't remember any. No, it, actually, as soon as I saw this, this paper, this was a lot of relief for me and I went on to my next fire.
My final question is, would you have felt comfortable as the Director of Engineering going down in the Titan submersible, specifically hull one, to full rated depth?
That's almost the best question here, isn't it? So Stockton's and my relationship started to turn sour as everything was built, but he asked me, he wanted me to be the pilot that runs the Titanic missions. And I told him I'm not getting in it. And he asked me why, and I said, because the operations crew, I don't trust them. That certainly was the death of me. But I didn't make it any easier with the following question. He said, well, what if I'm mission director? I said, you still have the same operations group. But I didn't trust Stockton either. They would take a look at where we started when I was hired, nothing that I got was the truth. I was, I was held with a bag and trying to save and I couldn't quit. If you would have asked me question number three, what if there was a different crew? We didn't have, we didn't have the standards we set forth, meaning, what does bad look like so that you have your come home indicator set? And Stockton was a constant moving target for that. What's it going to be tomorrow? Couldn't, couldn't trust that. So no, as the Director of Engineering, I did not go in serial number one.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Sir, just one follow-up. When you say a moving target, do you mean like the safety standards of what would be a go, no-go for an operation?
Oh yeah, everything. Yeah. Everything was, was a moving target. I mean, the, the cert path was a moving target, the, how are we going to call it was a moving target. Like, if we couldn't get there, then we just kind of reduced it and went on. I mean, from my, from my perspective personally, it's very stressful and death by a thousand cuts. And if he wanted somebody to go in it and he was truthful with, it's why the word experimental is in, is in the waiver. Like, I made him put that in there. We argued for a long time over that word, for sure. But you cannot do that without letting people know that it's experimental. We do not have this qual, it's not asserted. So to the extent that somebody knew the risks before they get in it and we called qual and they weren't going to run the full-fledged business out of it, that was, that was in my mind's eye, a negotiation that he had, he had to make and I had to keep technical. But once they asked me to sign off on the idea that they're going to put passengers and go to the Titanic, I told them no. But it was a moving target and I had to, thankfully, I got the opportunity to draw the line, I had the data to support it. But really, that's why serial number one was successful. That's, that's what we were supposed to do. The design of it was, do you, can you collect the data such that you prevent a catastrophic failure and ultimately a loss of human life? And we did that with serial number one. But without, Stockton drawing the moving targets, it was, it was, it was my target that I said, you can't, you can't do that.
Was there a designated safety officer for Ocean Gate operations during your time?
Right, that's a, that's a good question, that operations thing. Right, I don't, I don't know. That's a, I don't think so.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the coating that was applied to the outside of serial one versus what was applied to the third scale model?
Right, yeah, okay. Great, great question, because, because I can't remember who asked it about, was there a plan to take a look at this thing later on? And yeah, we, we, we got a coating put on serial number one that would not block acoustic emissions. I did pulse echo or through transmission just, just so that we could not have to try to remove it and do an inspection later on. But the coating on serial number one was specifically put on there for protection of the hull against some sort of abrasion or, like if the sub came apart or, or something. But then also allow us to do an inspection later.
Were both those coatings some sort of polyurethane, is that right?
I'm going to say yes without remembering exactly. I don't, I don't know. We asked Brian, like, what should we put on there?
So if I remember right, polyurethane is pretty, pretty hard, it's usually a weather coat for painting. Is, was there any cracks? Like, could you see if there's cracks if the hull was flexing?
Right, right. So no, that's a good, that's a good comment. No, this, this was more rubberized. We could peel the, we could peel the edges back, so it wasn't brittle like a, like a polygits. And especially hardening in the, in the sun. So the, the exact material of that, we put on a material that was common to put on fiberglass boats. I wish I could remember what that was.
Okay. I understand Ocean Gate originally went to Spencer Composites because of its history with Steve Fawcett's submersible. Later it was called the Deep Flight Challenger, I believe.
Yeah, it's part of it, yeah.
Did you get to see that hull?
No.
Did anybody at Ocean Gate see?
Not to my knowledge.
How about the drawings or the specifications?
No.
Was there any lessons learned, shared from Spencer Composites on, from that hull?
Yeah, so the, what, what I do know, and, and I'm going to call this secondhand, so I haven't, I haven't seen the hardware or the report, is that Fawcett's, Fawcett's sub issue was a flatness issue on the ring. So it turns out, actually, I mean, I hate to flip back and forth here, it turns out it helped me convince Stockton that the sealing surfaces of ring one to the dome had to be dead nuts flat. So the flatness requirement on both those interfaces had to be spot on. And then, I believe it was the conversation about Fawcett's. If I'm understanding, that was the issue, right? But that is the conversation that we had from that. And wasn't anything else about what he did.
That sub was designed for a much deeper depth than, than Titan was. Do you, do you know what the thickness was of the hull?
I actually don't know, no.
Okay, that's all I have, Captain, thanks. Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to take a short break, Mr. Nissen, and then reconvene at 12:43 for some final questions, sir.
Sounds good, yeah, right on.
Thank you. During your entire time at Ocean Gate, did you feel a sense of urgency or being rushed to get to operationals, to start operations? Was there pressure?
Oh, 100%, yeah. I mean, that started about the summer of 20, close to the end of summer of 2016. Yeah, maybe summer of 2016, when we decided not to do another one-third scale.
Do you feel like the sense of pressure influenced or negatively impacted safety decisions and testing?
And that's a difficult question to answer, because given infinite time and infinite budget, you could do infinite testing, right? For the, for the time that we had and within the constraints, we, we did all the consulting, all the analysis, we, we built it like an aircraft. We did the engineering like aviation does engineering. We did all the testing that we could on the components that we could. We brought every expert that we could find that could give us a comment on what we were doing. And that wasn't just the AE or, or just the hull. I mean, we defaulted to whomever we could. The titanium moduli were known because of testing. There's cert paperwork for, for that. If I could do it, if I could get some step closer to a legitimate cert path, we did it, for sure. If, if a test or an opportunity to do a test was brought up to my attention, we never turned it away.
And sir, you, a couple of times during your testimony, you mentioned the acoustics weren't clean.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give some examples? Do you mean sound or strain or both, sir?
Both. So it'd be really helpful if we could look at this, this diagram that you don't have yet, because a picture's worth a thousand words.
Well, sir, can you just kind of give a simplified definition of what concerned you?
Simplified definition? Sure. So in acoustic, in acoustic emissions are, well, let's just say acoustically for something like, like a, a structure like this. To understand why that's so important and what clean would look like, really clean would be zero. That, that would be not dirty whatsoever. A metallic doesn't show you the same signature. I'm actually not even sure that you could see acoustically a metallic break, because metallic breaks are dislocations and you get atomic realignment when those dislocations move. That's how we get flexibility in parts. So airplane wings stiffen because dislocation movement moves throughout that. But carbon fiber structures don't. Once that snaps, it's done. There's no atomic structure next to it for the atoms to realign themselves, really. The, even the glue's kind of, kind of stiff, but the fibers themselves, once it snaps, it's done. So ideally, you don't want to hear anymore. Then you know it's done failing. But strain, inward radio deflection of the center of the case, that's movement and that relates to, to moduli. So clean data in this sense is you fall within the parameters that the FEA models show you, which an aviation cert path would tell you that. That you, you wouldn't get an aviation cert path if you had flexibility someplace on a wing and it was outside what the FEAs showed you for the allowance. So clean would be you're, you're within the bounds that you've studied in your analysis and you are not failing acoustically anymore. You're very, very, very close to, to zero. It turns out in, in Green's conversations with him, you know, whether or not you go to a depth and then you come back up and you go to a depth and come back up, I mean, sometimes these mean something in, in these structures and they'll continue failing. sometimes these mean something in these structures, and they'll continue failing, and then they'll stop, and, and you come up to the surface, and when you come up to the surface, all the stress relieving goes away, and stuff moves around, but you should still be clean. In a, in a metallic, we would say it's clean if the system were allowed to stretch, and then it comes back to where it is. And so that would be, that would be elastic, right? Where if it's inelastic, and you get plastic deformation, it would go someplace, and it would stay, or not come back to where it is. There's a term for that, we call it hysteresis, and in material science, that's a .002 offset in strain. So, clean data is gonna be very low to zero snaps, we'll say, acoustically. It's gonna be within the confines of your models, what your FEAs are showing, for the safety factor that you wanna get. And it's gonna be no outside hysteresis, meaning that the system is coming back to where you started, in this case, on the surface. So you'd see it move, and it would come back. If there's, if there's a gap, then you wanna start thinking about answering that gap, but that would be clean.
Thank you, sir. One follow-up on that.
Mm-hmm.
If you had a hull, carbon fiber, and you, and the acoustics went quiet during a deep dive, and then over time, you started to see new acoustics, would that be a concern for a carbon fiber hull?
100%. Sorry. Yeah. No, once it goes clean, because these don't reattach themselves, that's a new break. Yeah, that's, so, here's something to, to note, though. You almost gotta be careful, clean assumes, of course, that your instrument is working. If you see zero snaps, make sure the instrument's working, right? So, there's, it's weird that I have to say that, but I've been in situations before where somebody looks at data and says, "Oh, look, it's great," and forgets that it wasn't running.
Sir, are there any final questions for Mr. Nissen, from the board or council? Thank you, sir. I appreciate your testimony for being here today. You are now released as a witness at this formal hearing. If I later determine that this board needs additional information from you, I will contact you directly. If you have any questions about this investigation, you may contact the investigation recorder, Lieutenant Kelly Steele. And we do plan to enter at least one exhibit from your testimony today, if you could meet up with the recorder and just pass her that document, we'd appreciate that. The schedule has moved back just a bit for today. We will reconvene after lunch at 1:55 PM, and that will be virtual testimony with Ms. Bonnie Carl. Thank you, the hearing is now adjourned.
Previously, we heard Mr. Nissen explain that he was unaware of Ocean Gate's plan to dive to the Titanic. He now further explains how some of the information that was given to him during his job interview with the company turned out to be, in fact, lies. This includes being told that Titan's hull was almost completed, and that the engineering itself had already been completed. We only have Mr. Nissen's testimony, of course, but if this is all in fact true, it raises huge red flags around Ocean Gate's recruitment process, which, in Mr. Nissen's case anyway, involved misinformation and withholding key objectives of the company. Again, this idea of a distance and level of secrecy held by those higher up in the company from those physically working on the project comes to light once more. In the Boeing feasibility study of Titan that is shown as evidence, we now find out that their recommendation was for the hull to be 10 inches thick, and then optimized to seven inches. The hull, of course, was reduced to five, with Mr. Nissen stating he does not know if any other independent studies were conducted outside of Ocean Gate and Spencer Composites regarding this choice, as it was before he joined the company. Also confirmed is NDT, or non-destructive testing, which is said to have been discussed for Titan's hull, but ultimately, never completed, with one attempt being unsuccessful due to equipment limitations. It is then stated that evaluation and testing remained high priority. We then learned that reevaluating the hull through its cycles was, as stated in the testimony, a plan, though there was no equipment available to do so, and would have to be designed specifically. Mr. Nissen also states that if Stockton Rush had a plan for when Titan's hull should be retired and replaced, he was not aware of it. Again, I feel there should be key conversations between a CEO and the head of engineering. Mr. Nissen's views of Rush, which were covered in the previous video, reappear here, describing him as difficult to work with. And again, if there was information or knowledge about the hull's lifespan, Rush never communicated it, which heightens the sense of secrecy and distance. Rush's view that safety can stifle innovation comes into play as he is stated to have replied, "I don't care," when told that the acrylic viewport would not be certified to, or anywhere close to the depths that Titan would be diving to. Further testing of the viewport is also stated to have been denied by Rush due to time and cost. When asked if he, as the head of engineering, would have dived in serial one of the Titan sub to full rated depth, Mr. Nissen explains how he told Rush, "No," when asked that very same question. He explains that he did not trust the operations crew, and also that he did not trust Rush himself, citing that nothing he was told during his initial interview was actually the truth. Rush is then described as a moving target, including his choices around certification and safety. Nissen also described a sense of pressure and hurry to complete the vessel and begin That concludes Tony Nissen's testimony, and I found it very insightful. I found the questions well-balanced between the operational style and culture at Ocean Gate, and also technical questions covering the build and testing of Titan. Please subscribe to follow along with future uploads. I look forward to hearing from the other figures who are connected to this tragic event. The more we find out, the clearer the whole picture will become, from what caused Titan's implosion, to those who played a part in its manufacture and operation, and perhaps, which of them shoulder some blame.